And it's what y'all will call the May 27, 2021, meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We please have the roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Here.
Cheryl Lee?
Present.
Greg Sherry?
Present.
Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
Carrie Kahler?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. At this time, we're going to item two, which is citizen comments. Now is the opportunity for any citizen to speak on any item not on the agenda. If you're here to speak about something that is on the agenda, please see the secretary and fill out a comment form so that we can recognize you when we get to your item. Do we have anyone signed up for our citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure there's no one here that just didn't fill out a form. We'll move on down to item number three. The items for individual consideration. Item three A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the April 29, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. You can send out it, well, I think we've all had an opportunity to read them. Were there any additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, I'll consider motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Greg.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect it. Passed unanimously. When we, we have a number of items here under item three, and I'd ask you like we did last month, if you want to speak, have a comment, or have a question, just turn on your microphone, and I'll recognize you. Promise everybody's going to get to talk as much as they want to. So, we go on to item three B. Consider action to approve the Colony Mud 1E, Section 2, Phase B, Final Platte, being 23.918 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bang survey, abstract number five, located south of Eight Oaks Drive and north of Sam Houston Drive, within the statutory and voluntary extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Hello, ma'am.
Good evening. All right, so this is in the Colony Mud, and as you just wrote off, it's in both the statutory and voluntary ETJ. It actually splits the boundary. But this is in between the two arms of the mud, southeast of Eight Oaks, and that should say north of Sam Houston Drive. All right, it's a relatively small section. It extends Loysoya Drive and connects Hershey, William Hershey, Hershey Drive to the north. That's 23.918 acres, creates 59 residential lots. They're approximately 55 foot wide. As we mentioned, it'll extend Loysoya Street to the south, which connects to Sam Houston and goes out to 969, and it extends William Hershey Street to the north, which will connect to Eight Oaks and the future arterial out the northern arm of 969. And then Kent Street is internal to the section. There are three drainage landscape, public utility, and open space lots. The DRC met, found the platte to be administratively complete. It's gone through the preliminary platte and public improvement plan processes. This was actually partially constructed a while back with drainage improvements, and now they are resuming with the rest of the public improvements. And the planning director recommends approval.
Anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, ma'am?
Yes. Carrie Kahler?
Aye.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passed. Thank you very much. Consider action, item three C, consider action to approve Pecan Park, Section 1B, Final Platte, being 16.3 acres out of the Mosaic Russo survey, abstract number 56, located north of Childers Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Allison.
All right. So this is the last residential section of Pecan Park, and so it is the...
Are you sure?
Yes. And so it will extend Childers Drive over towards the extension of Sterling Drive from the north, so you'll have ways out on Childers and then up Sterling to Agnes. And then there will be three residential streets within it. All right, there's a copy of the platte. As you can see, you have some, some drainage on the west side there, you know, your two connector streets, and then your residential streets within. It also stubs out to 1B to the north on Hamilton Pool Drive. 16.3 acres, 81 residential lots. They're approximately 40 feet wide. We talked about the extension of the streets, four landscape lots. It all drains through the channels to the south, to the river. DRC met and found the platte to be administratively complete. They did their preliminary platte appropriately in 2019, public improvement plans and public improvement plan agreements earlier this year. And the planning director recommends approval.
Are there any questions? Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Carrie Kahler?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, members. Item three D, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval of the Veridian Development Agreement with Continental Homes of Texas LP for 410 approximate acres of land in the Nancy Blakey survey, abstract 98, to the west of FM 969, located within the city of Bastrop extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you. Let's get to, good to see everybody tonight. I don't get to speak at these meetings very often. Kind of been missing it. So what we have here is a location map. I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with it. I've talked about it quite a bit, especially when we established the public improvement district. But it's approximately 400 acres right there off of 969, just south of the colony and west of the Colorado River, which I just talked about, right? So it's also, the area's located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and it's, the future land use plan for this is residential, so neighborhood residential. So what's important about that is, actually what they want to put here meets the intent of everything we've planned to do for the last 50 years. What you have here is the, the layout of the site. What I think is important to note here is this is in the ETJ, and it absolutely follows the intent of our building Bastrop, the B3 codes, right? Excuse me, sorry. There's a 720 grid requirement in the ETJ. This meets the majority of that. What you see here is some hashed marks. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that is an innovation track, which has not been decided if it's going to be part of this development agreement or not. If you remember when the NEU committee... Go ahead.
What is the, what kind of track is it?
Well, they're, they're calling it the innovation track.
Innovation track.
And if you'll remember, we had a conversation here before, and certainly at council, there was, the original purchaser of the property wanted to do a lot of modular homes in that area, and they went instead, Continental Homes is actually going to take this over and saved them a track, a 75 acre track, if they're still interested in doing that product. And they're going to make that decision July 15th. So the reason it's hashed is because there's a chance it'll be there, or there's a chance that it not, and we'll have that answer in July. So the development types and the land use, there's 72 acres of parkland, and you can see the percentages are also, again, very close to our, our standards in the B3 codes. Again, the innovation track, we're figuring out if that's in or out, and they'll also, the 10 acres of commercial is 2.6%, but they are also negotiating and may not keep that track as well. So what's important, again, about these development standards is, is it's in the ETJ, and we're building that 720 grid, but the city, through the development agreement, will annex this at some point. So when it's financially feasible for the city, and when we do that, we want it to be as code compliant as possible. So what they're proposing absolutely is...
Could you give us a little thumbnail about what the 720 grid is for those watching at home?
Sure, sure. So if you've seen our updated master transportation plan map, 720 grid, a square 720 by 720, 720 by 720, is one Bastrop building block, and that was laid out originally probably by the King of Spain, right? So what they do is come back in, and we've built inside our downtown area, a 330, about 330 block, inside of that one farm lot. So you can take four of our blocks that you currently see downtown and fit into that one spot. Does that help? So it's, this is linked to, actually, the, that authentic Bastrop feel is what we were talking about. Again, the block perimeters, they meet that. They're smaller than the farm lots, but they're very close. They have a lot of mature trees and, and quite a few drainage ways and creeks there, which is allows, which is why the roads aren't exactly that square that you see on our maps, because they're adjusting for nature, again, which is one of the intents of our code, to build to your surrounding areas. So again, and they're using those spaces for the park and open space. So what we can do, and if we can go back and look at some of this if you like, at the map, because everybody likes to see the map, right? But we can absolutely take and, and we do recommend approval for all this concept plan. You can make that decision tonight if you like, but since I talked about earlier how we're postponing this until after the 15th anyway, we're happy to bring this back to you on the 29th if you want to make your decision then. So, because I know you have some people that are ready to speak, so we'll give you some to look at this. And with that, I'll take any questions.
And the decision, that we can go over it again, what decisions are going to be made that we consider again in July? They have not been made yet?
So, so what, so what we're going to, what we'd like to do, so this isn't a required public hearing, right?
Right.
Because this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's absolutely, you're not, you're not voting on zoning tonight. What you're doing is bringing a recommendation from the board, which we thought would be important, and we're going to bring a recommendation from staff when we bring this to council for approval, which will be sometime at the end of July. So what you would do tonight is either recommend, or wait, and recommend on the 29th, or not recommend at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
An approval of this concept plan.
Before I open the public hearing, are there any comments? I'll see, Carrie.
You said something about modular homes in that hatched area. Can you talk about what, what that means, what, what the definition of modular homes would be?
Sure. This was a, this was a home that was, and I don't have the stuff here, I wasn't prepared to talk about that, but essentially, it's a, a much more open space concept with smaller modular units that you come in, and they connect together, right? And you can expand the home for the size of your family, as your family shrinks, or your family grows, you can expand and contract. It's a really cool idea. They're talking about commercial and all that other good stuff in there, so it's a really very walkable community, but they're undecided on whether they want to do that or not. And if they do not want to exercise that option, it'll be what you see, and that's traditional 720 gridded blocks.
Thank you.
That help?
Sure. That's great.
Yes, on the, on the layout, it's a little hard to tell, but are those, as you're going along that main road going through, are the houses basically, do we have the backs of the houses there, and the fences are, are they facing the smaller streets, or are they facing?
So that's an excellent question. What they've done here is actually build a grid similar to what we require, but they've also, 50% of those will not be facing, so let me rephrase that. Those houses will be facing in those areas. They've developed development standards that are also very similar to our B3 codes, but it does allow a little more flexibility to build the type of product that they build. So they're, about 50% will be alley load, to answer your question, about 50% will be, no, will not be.
So, okay, so some of it may be, we don't know yet, but are they going to show us a little bit more on, I think that was one of the intent was the building code, or the block we have here, a lot of the, you wouldn't have the backs of those units?
Yes, and you're asking the right question, because on those longer streets, they will be alley loaded.
Okay.
So that's, I'm sorry for not catching that the first time you asked it. Ah, and a green belt between the houses and the street.
Okay.
So again, it really does meet the intent, but it doesn't have exactly the same architectural requirements, which allows them to build a product that's a little different.
I guess you're advising, as you're going through the development with them, that we really, we want to see eyes on the street for the most part.
Absolutely, yep. And that's, that's why they've adjusted their development agreements.
Okay.
To do something that's not standard for this company.
That answer your questions, Pablo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I can't tell, are lights on down here? Matt?
Trey, if you could speak somewhat, because I think we're all very familiar with development within the city, and I think we know what development in the pure county looks like. This being part of the ETJ, what exactly is the authority of the city, this board? And if this developer doesn't develop this, if someone else purchases it to do something different, what could they do with the property that may or may not need our approval?
So the subdivision, so in the ETJ, we have the subdivision authority, so they would have to come here anyway. We are also the wastewater provider. We are also going to be the water provider. We work to deal with Aqua. I think 2018, as long as we buy wholesale from them and their CCN, they'll relinquish it, the new subdivisions to us, so we can sell retail. So we're going to be the utility provider, which again, gives us another piece of leverage, if you will, to make sure the development meets the intent of what we want to see in the city limits, and they've also agreed to annex. Does that help?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what you could see without that is, is a disconnected development, right? For example, even the, they're connecting to Woodlands Drives, for example, that's about a mile and a half long cul-de-sac, which would not meet any type of fire regulation requirements, right? You wouldn't be able to do that now. But it would give you a much better connected product.
That answer your questions?
Yeah.
Anything else? This is a public hearing, thank you, Trey.
Sure.
This is a public hearing. If anyone wants to be heard on this issue, and you would need to see the secretary and fill out a form. We have a few folks that have done so. So the first per, and we have received comments regarding this, so we will talk about those later. First up is Anthony Uresti. You'll have three minutes, sir, so...
Thank you.
Please tell us your name and address.
Anthony Uresti, 405 Woodlands Drive.
Thank you.
So I mean, obviously, on the, the map itself, it's going to use Woodlands Drive as a, as a through street, so bring in more traffic on that street that, right now, currently doesn't have much traffic. It's safe, I can take my kids out, I can go for walks down the street. But what this is going to do is not only put more traffic in the afternoon, which is pretty much, right now, they have to go to 304 to get to 969. It's not just that subdivision, which, what it will affect, will affect the subdivisions around that, using Woodlands as it go through, as opposed to going to 304. So putting more traffic on the street that has already been a pretty much private street that I really don't, I don't like the plan. Now, if the plan didn't go with Woodlands Drive as being a through, I could probably see this as a possibility, but still even being the fact that it's using Woodlands Drive as a through street, I think the people, 200 feet were notified, but not the whole subdivision of Woodlands was notified. So I didn't get a piece of paper saying. I saw on up front.
The ordinance calls for it.
So, I'm, I'm, I just, I oppose it. I don't, I don't, I don't like the plan.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ernie Fields?
Good evening.
Hi.
I live at 1...
Could you give me your name and address, please, ma'am?
Ernie Fields. I'm at 105 George Kimball Cove, and that is in Bastrop. The concern is, recently, we've had a lot of water. You're talking about drainage issues. There is another development that's going on, on the south side of this proposed development. What is the plan for treatment? What is the plan for access and egress? Because 969 is, right now, getting very crowded. So what is the plan to put in place for safety being an issue? You're going from a not overly used road to one that now there will be three subdivisions on? So what is the plan for that? What is the developer's plan in terms of the environment? What is the impact on the environment? There are a lot of trees on that property. When you remove them, you're opening up floodplains, you're, you're talking about the topography being changed. How is that going to impact the area? Additionally, you're talking about, I don't know how many homes, that has not been bought up in this session. Depending on how many, right now, there is an additional problem, and yes, I'm new to the area just a couple of years, but there is only one way in and one way out to the city of Bastrop, coming down 71, coming over 969 to 71 to get downtown. Are there plans to make other access roads to get to the downtown part of Bastrop through 969, off of 304, the back way? What are those plans when you're talking about 400 acres that's being developed and that is not specified to the amount of housing that you're talking about? So that's my concern.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing I can talk about is on the master transportation plan. If you would look at that, it might answer some of your questions about future plans for opening up roads and the like. So there has been a lot of planning and consideration for future development that's in the comprehensive plan and specifically in the transportation plan.
I did, I did view that, it, for me being a layperson, it wasn't very comprehensive. It talked about things down the road, but these developments aren't down the road, they're imminent, and the impact on the now is the concern. A lot of those were projections for the future, so that's the other concern.
Thank you, ma'am. Noah Lynn?
Hi. Hi, my name's Noah Lynn. I live at 43 Woodlands Drive, and I was one of the people who did get paperwork because my property is going to be affected, very much so by this decision. I am speaking on behalf of at least four other homeowners right near the end of Woodlands that were not able to be here today. We object tremendously that we do not want Woodlands to be an open road going through to this property. Obviously, it was sold, someone's going to build there. No matter what we get in that 400 acres, we do not want our street to be part of this development, to have vehicles going down our street to go past our houses for safety. And it's also, we're like this little community, and we are loving how we're living, we love Bastrop, but we want our space to be our space. We do not want to have any accidents. We have a lot of wildlife there, and once they end up taking all that space where the wildlife could be, they're going to stick more where we are. So I would like them to be considered as well as the trees. I do agree with that. And is it possible, I see they have one entrance coming onto Woodland, I mean, onto 71, would you be willing to do another entrance onto 71 instead of using Woodlands? I would like to throw...
Ma'am, at this point, you're, you're...
Sorry.
...speaking with us.
Sorry.
We'll give the developer...
I apologize, sorry.
We'll give the developer, if he wishes, an opportunity to speak to concerns.
That would be something I would ask to be considered, because I know you guys have to take FEMA into consideration, you have to take fire codes into consideration, but everybody that I know that lives on that road does not want us to be affected by this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Neff?
Hello, I'm Rick Neff. I'm the developer of the colony for the, for Hunt Communities, just which abuts to the north here. And we have a number of concerns about this plan. As much as I like to support other developers, and I know this system won't be a good one in the end, one of, one of the primary things is the connections that are shown to the north. At least a couple of those do not coincide with our approved plan for our property. And as I understand it, it's the city's intention to annex this property into the city, and so I'm a little concerned about how, how do we manage both the connecting public roads to private roads, and also, and, and there's, this probably will take care of itself, in that we're hoping that our, our roads will be, eventually be taken over by the county, but as it stands today, they're not. But also the idea of the trail systems and the amenities within the two communities, we're all for that, you know, we're, we're spending, you know, 20 million, 25 million dollars on those kinds of things in our community that are being paid for and maintained by the residents in our community. And even though we, so I think there needs to be some kind of an agreement, some kind of, it needs to be addressed, how that's going to happen, because I, I can foresee folks in, in this particular community wanting to go through, into our community, be a part of our park system, be a part of our trail system, that, that sort of thing. And my biggest concern is liability, but there's also the concern of maintenance of all these facilities that's being paid for by other residents. We are a little bit concerned about drainage. We know this early in the, in the, in the development phase, and the, and the staff will give adequate views of that, but we want to make sure that the, the storm drainage is handled properly before it's the final approval. Let's see, what have I, also, I left out here. One other thing I was just curious about is if the city is supplying water and wastewater to this part of the community, from where, where is that coming from, and will it require that the colony provide access or easements of some sort to get those facilities to this property, which is not clear at this point? That's really the biggest, the biggest concern for us is, are again, these, these north-south connectors, and the ones that are, we have that are approved, which is fine, but this shows ones that are not, and that would dramatically affect our development plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Jobe, do you want to speak to some of the concerns that have been raised right now, or would you rather wait until we hear from everybody?
Is that the, you want to wait?
We've heard a lot about concerns about drainage.
Sure.
This gentleman is concerned about water and wastewater.
Sure, I can address that. The, we, we will not need any easements or access from the, from the colony as far as water and wastewater utilities. We will regulate with the same drainage standards we regulate the colony with, so I'm hoping they're good enough for, for this, these people too. And the road connections, I just want to remind everybody, this is a concept plan, so it's not going to be exact, but we do have a roadway agreement with the colony that actually does allow for certain connections and a process for the county taking those over. It's a three-party agreement, so they could start that process whenever they like. And the roads are technically dedicated in a public right-of-way, not private streets. They may have been built by the mud, and maybe maintained by the mud, but they're built in public property. So if that clears anything up.
So we're looking, once again, we talk about a concept plan.
Correct.
Most, most of this is not in, in stone, and there's going to be a lot of opportunities
Absolutely.
...for people to see as this develops where the roads connect and what happens.
Absolutely.
And, and...
Sorry.
The drainage, I know you, it's one of the big... And the drainage, I know it's one of the big concerns that we have.
It is. And, and I will say that just a few years ago, if everybody recalls, the city of Bastrop actually put together a drainage moratorium and didn't allow development for a solid year and a half while we went through and updated all of our rainfall totals, brought everything back up and do the best practices for drainage that you'll see just about anywhere. That are not as restricted with the water quality, but they are when it comes to the drainage requirements.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dewan Fields.
Good evening. Professor, I want to compliment you because you got my name right first time out. So congratulations.
Give your name, your address, please.
My name is Dewan Fields and I live at one oh five George Kimball Cove in the colony. Most of my concerns have been expressed already, so some of this is echoing. But in conjunction with that, does the board have the plans for, from the developer, on how they plan to handle the drainage? And this is key only because, well, I shouldn't say only. From a selfish standpoint, my backyard faces that property. There is a drainage canal, but it is not large enough to handle the development on the other side of that. And there are some mature trees, but they're in the back, going toward the back of the property. In the front of that property, any removal of soil, repurposing, surfacing. It seems in Texas, they don't use a lot of French drains, so they slope the land. Obviously, you're going to slope it toward the ditch. So if there's any conception of widening that to be able to handle both sides, because our property slopes already into that. We don't want that to turn into a pool for mosquitoes. Okay, it is bad enough with our drainage going there. Another development going there is going to be really bad. Because this is a concept, it's really hard to speak to because this is going to change. So even if we're saying, hey, we're not in favor of that, it is going to change. What I do see happening is the explosion of traffic, of people, resources. If this is being annexed into the city, that means city resources are going to be used. Right now, if we call for emergency services, we're using the sheriff's department. How does that work with the two properties being right next to each other? And is that going to impose the hiring of additional resources? Because now you have so many other homes there, that impacts the taxpayers of Bastrop when we're not using or able to use those services also. So I would.
Well, when you're not in the city limits, you are handled, emergencies are handled by the sheriff's department.
That is correct. So I guess I'm.
That's some, not something that this commission and the city is going to pass on one way or the other. There are emergency standards and that must be met. And as Mr. Jobe just said, we had a moratorium because of drainage concerns. And yours is very valid. If my property was by that canal, I'd be quite concerned myself. So I appreciate you coming. And like we said, it's a concept plan.
Yep.
And if I were you, I'd keep an eagle eye out.
Oh.
And you'll have an opportunity to speak again.
Indeed so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Uresti has spoken. Did I miss anyone that has signed up to speak tonight? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions by commission members?
I'll make a couple of comments. First, just, you know, recognizing everybody's drainage concern. But there, there are state laws against that stormwater conveyance from one property onto another. So the state has their own regulations for it and then the city has their own. And, you know, we have engineers dedicated to looking at that. So, you know, that, that, they will be looking at that going forward. I share, I've been driving nine six nine since I got a driver's license. And I recognize the significant traffic changes on that road. And that's not something that we can consider here. And I've gotten my hand slapped for it before, bringing that up. But if there's a way for us to push on TechDOT a little bit, to maybe reconsider the, where that falls. I think it is really important because we are putting a lot of people out there and it's a two-lane road without a center turn lane. And it's dark and it's windy and that's why I like to drive it. But it, I, it's dangerous. And putting that many more people on there without, you know, good ingress egress is a problem. And, you know, I think it, it's worth looking at that road and doing whatever we can do to, you know, facilitate making sure it's properly considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With the sneeze screens, I can't see the lights down there. Matt, anything? Okay. Go ahead. Come on, Trey. Jennifer.
So nine six nine is a TechDOT regulated road. So with that, any new developments that go on to that road do actually have a TIA requirement, traffic impact analysis requirement from TechDOT. So the developer is in that process of working through that with TechDOT. And what, so, and they'll be required to pay for upgrades proportionate to the demand they're creating on that road. In addition to that, there are, there's, TechDOT has their own studies. The Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is our regional transportation authority, also does regional plans. Nine six nine is one of the, one of their major roads in Bastrop County on that plan. I will say, I don't think they have that one slated. They do have it slated on the plan to widen to four lanes, but I don't think it's to, until somewhere around, I think, twenty, twenty-eight. However, that being said, all of these plans get reevaluated every few years. And with the development pressures that are coming this way, those plans are now getting reevaluated with, with a lot of new data and a lot of new growth models. So there's a chance that those, the, the more development pressure they see coming this direction, the higher priority those are given than, in, in those plans.
There's been some concerns stated about the impact, traffic impact on Woodlands.
So I will say, one of, our policy is that, you know, more connectivity is better. It is actually still, it's a benefit as well for the Woodlands that they don't, if something closes off that road, then that subdivision can't get out as well. So more connectivity is always better. But I will say, in this case, you'll see on the concept plan, it's not a, it's not one of the major thoroughfare plan roads of the subdivision. It's actually a local potential road that's connecting into it. It's not, you'll see the, the bigger white roads. Those are their major thoroughfare plan roads through the subdivision. And the smaller little ones are their neighborhood roads. So it is a neighborhood road that's connecting so someone, and again, they're going to start building at the front. So it's going to take a little bit to get to the back. But it's, especially with the innovation tract where that goes, most of that traffic is going to get funneled back to nine six nine, so.
Anyone have any questions from its bills?
I do.
Go ahead.
I was like, speaking of transportation, so, but there are these connect, this connection to seven coming south.
Yes, and I will say these are, the developer is not responsible for those connections. Those do go off of their property. But in our master transportation plan, we call for that, that, they are responsible for their portion of the southern boundary road, which is an extension of Blakey Lane as it comes across nine six nine. There is that required road. And then this development to the south is in development agreement from two thousand and eleven that once any part of that decides to develop, that has to annex into the city limits. And so tho, and those road connections will be required of that developer. And again, things that we didn't think were going to get built for several years are getting built a lot faster than we had originally anticipated. So these, so this development will ultimately have connections back to seventy-one in at least two places that we have mapped out on our master transportation plan, so. So those, so you'll see right there, the gentleman talked about this power line right there. That's the L C R A power line that cuts across the southern part of Bastrop. It continues up over seventy-one. And we can, you can cross that with roads. You can't run along the whole stretch of it, but you can cross it at points. So we can have roads that cross that L C R A easement.
Papa.
So it was brought up earlier about the green spaces and how it's going to work with the development to the north of that. Will they be able to, as they get through this a little bit farther along, to kind of show how that's being integrated? So that, you know, when we're showing this, we're not, we're seeing them both together maybe? I don't know how that's going to work.
And that'll, that'll be something we have to work out with each individual plat most likely. So the, both, both subdivisions, a lot of those parks will, well, all those parks in the colony are maintained by the homeowners association. A lot of the parks in Veridian will likely be also maintained by the, the homeowners association. They have a, this entire development, over eighty acres worth of parkland, which is twenty percent of the development, or open space. And a lot of that's due to trying to handle the drainage in more of a natural fashion. And because of the highly tree nature of this, they're trying to preserve as many of those trees they've, as they can. And one of the things, if you look at their cross-sections that are in the development agreement for the roads, they're actually putting, and you can kind of see on this thing that they've got green space between those major thoroughfare plans. And it's to create a, a green kind of connection road through there with sidewalks and bike trails. So individual neighbor, these individual neighborhoods will be walkable. You'll have walkable trails into those parklands, but you'll also be able to walk the entire, all the streets with sidewalks and bike trails. So it's, it's a little bit more of a concept of, if you go to the, the Woodlands in Houston, where you, you don't always see the houses when you're driving down the street, but they're all there. But it's to keep more of that, that forest feel.
I guess my, my question's more about when they're going through this process of showing drawings and we're looking at it. I don't know, is it helpful to see what's going on in this case? Because there's something else there already. It's not like there's nothing there.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, you know, to the concern we're, we're being asked, that this is impacting that in some way. I just, you know, are you looking, I know you're looking at that, but I mean, is there a way to see that graphically?
We could, we'll, we'll see it, I mean, all of our plats when they come, we have to see the adjacent properties. So they show that on their survey. So we'll see what's adjacent to those boundary, boundary lines on every plat. To see what, what we're up against, the houses versus.
Traffic impact analysis.
So with, with our code, as, as long as you're meeting the grid requirements, we don't have that TIA requirement. But they do have that requirement for TechDOT. So they, which is looking at those connections out of the development to the major, major roads.
So we can point to that to answer the question about a lot of traffic issues?
Yes, yeah.
I agree with you.
Ishmael?
I was just wondering, so Texas Park and Wildlife is going to be involved with like maybe inspecting this area to see if there's, no?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay. I just, you know, I'm just concerned just with anything like all the wildlife. That's a lot of land to go and disrupt, so.
It's, it is natural land and that's part of the development process. We, there are, to my knowledge, there aren't any protected species and that's usually what we look at during the planning phase.
Anyone else?
And the developer is here to answer questions as well.
Okay. Does anyone want to ask the developer anything? Are there any other questions from the commission?
Well, I'll say that this is a good plan that we're seeing. I, I mean, we saw some other things before and this one's trying to address what we've already started with the B three codes. And so I think that's a real positive thing to the concerns about traffic. I think there's some good answers to that, but it probably needs to speak about a little bit more in some way. So that could get, maybe there's concern meetings or they can address that. But I, I do think, you know, the, the other issue about how these two are going to work together, that could be resolved maybe graphically or somehow. I don't know. That's, I'm sure that's going to be ongoing. So I, I see that coming back again, those issues. So we can have something to, to respond to that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, this isn't the last time we'll see this.
For sure.
Um, I do, also with the water and wastewater. I guess to go off of what she said earlier, we really don't necessarily know how many houses are going to be here, right?
So, so with this development agreement, what they have requested that's in the development agreement is a sixteen hundred living unit equivalents is what their requested wastewater capacity is in our system. That doesn't equate to sixteen hundred homes necessarily. That's sixteen hundred living unit equivalents of wastewater capacity. So if there's commercial development that may take, that'll take some of it if they have apartment developments. It, it's all, it's all an equation. So sixteen hundred L U Es is what we're planning for. And so it'll be, so maximum sixteen hundred homes, but most, but usually less than that, so.
Learn something new here every day. Any other questions? If none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Pablo Serna.
Yes.
Carrie Kahler.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Matt Lawson.
Yes.
Cheryl Lee.
No.
Greg Sherry.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
And once again, this is not the last time we'll see this. This is not the last time that you all will have an opportunity to speak. I think what we have seen from this concept plan is a development and a developer that are, who are working hard to meet our requirements, respect the lay of the land. And sometimes you're just gonna, you're going to have to have more traffic and more people come to where you live. That's where you're, where you're there in the first place because you love it. And other people are finding that Bastrop's a great place to be. So stay involved, stay tuned, make your voices heard. And just know that this community and this city is trying to do the best we can to, won't make everybody happy, but we'll do our best. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously with one, with one objection.
And since we did, have, have pushed back the date of the council meeting, we will repost the notice. So people are aware of when that meeting date is.
Okay, thank you. We will now go into workshop. Item four A, Discussion on Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Seven, Parks and Recreation, and Chapter Eight, Cultural Arts Tourism.
So this is our continuing discussion on the future update of our, well, the future review and potential updates of the comprehensive plan. We had a pre-budget planning meeting on May eighth with City Council, if any of you watched that, that we did talk quite a bit about the comprehensive plan and where we were and where we were going. And especially in light of the upcoming budget requests we'll be making. So we've gone through a kind of a, a review of the chapters, a basic review and kind of some high-level definite, which, which sections need to be updated for sure? And which one have, which ones have sub-plans that need to be updated? So where we're at today is, Chapter Seven is our Parks and Recreation, a section of the comprehensive plan. And then the Cultural Arts and Tourism chapter. Both of these sections have more detailed sub-plans, master plans that go with them. So we have a Parks Master Plan that was updated in, last in two thousand and fifteen. And we have a budget request in for this upcoming fiscal year to update that plan. One of the Texas Parks and Wildlife requirements are to get grant funds is to make sure that plan is updated every five years. So we need to get that updated to qualify in the future for grant money for parks programs or parks improvements. So that's definitely something that we're going to look at, especially in lieu of, we've had, Pecan Park is a dedicated riverfront property that is part of, now part of our park system. We have Piney Creek Bend that's added to that. So with the development, we're getting additional parks and we need to account for those in our inventory. Figure out programming, the best programming for those different parks. We, you know, we always, always tend to use Fisherman's Park and Bob Bryant. You know, we, those two parks get overprogrammed at times. So kind of have a new comprehensive look. So that will be something that'll be going on, hopefully, if it gets budgeted for next year. We also, this other chapter is the Cultural Arts and Tourism. This chapter specifically looks at, this is kind of the what makes Bastrop unique and authentic chapter that we have, the historic downtown. We have lots of features that make tourism popular or a destination. Uh, we have, uh, cultural amenities and, um, environmental amenities that, uh, make the city, uh, popular. And we've proven that with, we're now a bird city, uh, we're a scenic city, we have, there's another one in there, we're a film, uh, film-friendly. We're, haha, we're, I think, the live music capital. Or, so we've got a, a lot of these, uh, things that we've accomplished with the Cultural Arts Master Plan. So, and the Cultural Arts Master Plan is one that was just adopted as a sub-plan to the comprehensive plan in two thousand nineteen. And then they also appointed just this summer, or this spring, a Cultural Arts Commission that'll be looking at how to implement this plan. So this section, um, there, there have been some definite milestones that we've met, um, in the comprehensive plan cha, chapter, that as we do the review, we'll be able to check off on and add, um, some new probably updates from the Cultural Arts Master Plan. But there shouldn't be a great deal of updating needed to this section, because we just, we just adopted a new plan in two thousand nineteen that the Cultural Arts Commission is now, uh, working through. So any questions about these two sections?
I have a question. So, um, said something about the sixty, sixty-three acres of needs, parkland needs, I was reading about earlier. Is that, is that included in what, like, is that in addition to what's gonna, what's already here, or gonna be in the development, or is that with what's the, or is that gonna be something proposed to find more land for the parks?
Um, I'd have to, haha, it's been a second since I've read that section. Um, that plan took into account, uh, the, the parkland, um, it kind of evaluated parks on several different scales. Um, one of them, uh, that is a regional scale, that you need to have regional parks, which we actually, uh, uh, have more regional parks, uh, for our size than, um, normal. I think the sixty-three acres was referring to some, getting more local park access, and that comes with the development, uh, becomes kind of twofold. One with development, making sure as the subdivisions are planned, we get the, that, that local component of the parkland. Um, and then, um, I think it was also looking for, um, some additional parkland in, uh, parts of the core. So it's, it was kind of a mix of, based on future development needs, which is why we need to update that, because the growth has, um, uh, it's fulfilled some of that and then expanded it in other areas, so.
And, and so with those, uh, parks, um, are they gonna, are we gonna look to cater to different lifestyles of people, maybe special needs or?
And that's something the plan can, can look at, or, and that's one of the things that, um, it does, um, an assessment of what we have. It literally counts how many benches we have, you know, um, what, what our current inventory is, and then helps, um, program, uh, what, what we need in the city. So it can look at those, those aspects, that plan will. And that's one of the things, when we scope it out, that's something we can, with the, with the Parks Board, cause the Parks Board will be the one that oversees this kind of plan, um, guidance and implementation. They'll have a lot of input into the scope, so that's a definite item that we can, um, look at in the scope is what types of parks do we need.
Not just parks, but also recreation, because there's not enough diversity in recreation in Bastrop. So, um, that definitely needs to be assessed as well. And that's, again, gonna be done through community engagement.
Yes, definitely, there's, um, a lot of community engagement in the parks plans, so.
Anything else? Your light's still on, you still want, you have questions?
Yes, I did, I turned it off and then back on.
Okay.
I took a few notes. Alright, so, um, I know we're looking at, like, expanding the trails, right? Um, let's see, uh, we don't have a lot of, uh, a lot of shared trails, is it, yeah, share use trails? Um, so what are we looking at as far as, is there a timeline to get certain ones at a certain time, or we're gonna kind of combat it all at the same time, or?
Um, I think that the plan is, is to, in that, is, a lot of that ends up being development-driven and grant-driven. Um, so when we're trying to put together, it's like, uh, Capital Improvement Plan, that's how we go through the budget every year to plan capital improvements, which, uh, trail system would be factored into that. Right now, like, the last couple of years, you've seen we've had, um, an emphasis on the sidewalks, trying to get some of those sidewalk networks completed. Um, trails is, is another component of kind of that same, um, area of connectivity. That's, I think, one of the things that needs to be updated with a little more focus in the Parks Plan, and making sure that ties back to our B three code. So I will say our B three code was very, um, kind of large-scale visionary. I think we maybe lost a little bit of that specificity on making sure we get those improvements with each development, so.
Our last one. So, um, are we, are we looking at, are actively looking at ways to get more benefit from Mayfest Hill? Like, scheduling more events or expanding that area, or like, where are we at with that, do you know?
I do not know, the parks, I know the Parks Board has been talking about it a lot, I would have to get with them on the exact where, what direction they've been going on that. But that would be what would go into, uh, pr, programming the parks with the, the, in the plan.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Anyone else have any questions? Alright.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Snuck up on me.
I know this is probably a programming question, but what is a plan for Bash Up State Park? Is it re-integrate, are we trying to dovetail what we're doing with them, or in any way?
I would have to get with the Parks Board on that, I'm not, not as up on, on that part of our planning.
Oh, so I know that's, that's why I didn't know how this, uh, how that question applied, but I thought I better ask it.
That's okay, just ask away. Now, is there anything else?
But Nicole's got it on our list of things for me to follow up on later, so.
Cool, alright. Number five, updates, five A, update on recent City Council actions regarding Planning Department items.
I totally put that into the wrong section. Uh, so we did, uh, just this Tuesday, we had the public hearing and, uh, consider, uh, first reading of the sign code amendments, uh, that you all reviewed at your last meeting. Uh, the main, uh, kind of things that council asked us to look at and go back and maybe add some, some clarification, some references for, uh, one, the site triangle requirements weren't, um, as clear as they should be in that, in that section, so we're gonna go and make sure that it's referenced, uh, for specific sign types that definitely tend to block site triangles, if not, uh, reviewed properly. So we're gonna, uh, tweak the code for that. Um, then A-frame signs, uh, there was some ambiguous language on how many and where, um, the A-frame signs can be. Um, they can be on any, anywhere in town, but downtown is where they tend to be more prevalent. Um, so we're going to, uh, work on that language, uh, to make sure that, um, they're being properly, properly utilized downtown, and making sure they don't block the walking path and clear zone, um, that the sidewalks were installed to provide. And then also temporary banners on where, um, where they can be installed, um, on a building or on some other kind of structure, and clarifying that language. But otherwise.
Being temporary, I hope there's not a whole lot of restriction.
Uh-huh, on temporary.
Temporary, I mean, you know, if it's a permanent, it's one thing, if it's a temporary, well, sale or?
Part of the problem with banners is sometimes they become a permanent and temporary banner, so.
Well, that's different.
Yeah, so that, that's, um, the, and then one of the other questions that was asked was, um, what are implementation of, uh, the sign code will look like? Um, with, you know, the codes changing over the years, uh, enforcement has, um, there's been a little bit of drift on that in town, and people have, uh, put up a lot more, um, illegal signage. So, uh, we're going to, once this gets adopted and updated, now that it's got some clearer language, um, start a communication campaign to inform businesses of what the regulations are, and give everyone kind of a, a buffer period to, uh, come into compliance with the regulations before we start, uh, going out and, um, starting our code compliance work. Once we are, uh, once everyone's aware and make sure that everyone knows what the rules are, so.
Does temporary banners refer to also, um, like, event banners that are only up for, to advertise maybe a, an event, like the car show, or, um, Fourth of July? Are those also, do those fall under temporary banners?
Um, if they're on private property, yes. The, we do have the Sign Plaza, that is the city-managed, uh, banner, it's called the Banner Plaza, and that's for special events. So a lot of those special event banners do go up on the, that plaza, the Sign Plaza, which was installed specifically to, um, stop ha, hanging signs over the ride-ways and on the bridge, because it was causing damage, so. But if it's on a private property, they would need to get a temporary permit for that banner.
For, so just as an example, if someone wants to put a banner on the First National Bank downtown, near downtown, and First National Bank approves that.
Mm-hmm.
It's their property, the, the event, or the, um, organization would still have to get a permit?
The owner, the, the, so the business owner, the property owner gets it, they can have a temporary banner hang on their building for up to two months out of the year, so that would go towards their allowance of that two months. And they would have to approve the application for that banner, so.
After the two months, or?
No, for, for that two-month period, yeah.
For that two months, period.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
So you, you will see that there are some businesses around that have a banner up constantly, and that's something that will, um, be enforced in the future.
The First National Bank, where, um, by seventy-one, where they had to drive by Starbucks, that property there, uh, First National has allowed a lot of, a lot of groups to put up banners with T-posts, T-posts for a few weeks to advertise something.
Yeah.
Would First National need to get a permit for that?
They would, but again, they can only have one banner for up to two months out of the whole year, so. What, that, their, their banner plaza there that they've created does not, um, it, does not align with the code. It's not allowed by code.
So they couldn't advertise the car show, and then at the same time advertise?
No.
Okay.
So, why, what, what's the why behind that? Because we do, we're, we're, we want people to come to town, right? We want visitors, we wanna attract people in, into our events. So now if you're putting restrictions on, um, a sign that might be up three weeks, um, what, what's the why behind that? I feel like that would be inhibiting, um, promotion of events in Bastrop, when, again, I've been here forever, and that's been there. I can understand them being there too long, um, but requiring a permit, which is, would be how much? How much is a permit, or something like that?
I would have to look that up, I can't remember off the top of my head.
So I wanna put a banner up because we're advertising Juneteenth that's coming up. So now I gotta pay two hundred dollars to have a banner up for a three-week period? I think that that may end up deterring people from, one, being able to advertise their event and promote their event. I, I would like to know the why, why are we requiring?
So we can, as with sign regulations, uh, with First Amendment re, rules, we can regulate types of signs, size, like, type of construction of sign, type of si, size of the sign. Uh, we can't regulate what it says on the sign. If I have to read your sign to decide what kind of a sign it is, then I can't, can't regulate it that way. So, um, the good example is we call it those little signs that go up on the wire, um, that people put up for garage sales and all that, that we call those bandit signs. And some cities used to regulate garage sale signs one way, real estate signs another way, and, but they were all the same sign, and I, the only way I knew what they were is if I read them. I can just reg, I can regulate that type of sign. So that's the thing with banners, is, is we can regulate the size of banner, how long the banner's up, um, and if, and if you're fine with First National having eight, eight or, you know, eight banners up all the, all the time, because it's, but it, it, if it's two months for each type of ban, each banner, not total banners, then every business in town can have, then they're, then we need to just eliminate the timeframe of banners.
What I was referring to was, there's that, that big plot of land there, and they would allow, like, the fish fries at my church, the car show.
Yeah.
Not, not First National banners, but First National would allow other groups like Juneteenth to put up a banner there to advertise their upcoming event. So that would not be allowed, because?
So, so would the library, the library would allow banners.
Yeah, true.
So I, I just think that's, I don't see that as a good, like, honor.
So, but it, the same could be that any, any business in town then could rent out their front yard for banners, because I'm not regulating what type, whose banner it is, just because it's a nonprofit. It's, that's, so.
Well, they do it free of charge, they don't charge anything.
Yeah, well, they do, but like Walmart now could just rent out every space along the furniture road with banners.
That might say something offensive, is that what you're saying? It could be.
Or just, or just advertisement for McDonald's down the street, or?
So you don't wanna, so you're trying to put restrictions on it to prevent, um, I mean, I, I, if I wanna, and I'm just using First National, I'm just throwing it out there, I'll use the library this time. If I'm, if I wanna put a sign up that's offensive at the library, and the library is willing to pay the permit for it, or the person is gonna pay the library, it's still gonna be up there, it's still gonna be out there for whatever amount of time it's gonna be out there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I, if the, if the thinking behind that is to prohibit something like that from occurring, it's gonna occur if they pay the permit and put it up there, unless there's specific language saying you can't put X, Y, Z on your banner, which there's not gonna be, right?
No, we don't have any, any regulations on language on banners, so.
So I, again, am not understanding the why are we prohibiting committees in Bastrop that are potentially bringing revenue into our city from being able to advertise that without the restriction of a cost and another fee associated on top of the fees that they're probably already paying for the space that they're using, vendors that they're using. I think we should make it a little bit more, I think that this is one that we can let go, that's just my.
So, yeah, so I'm just saying, uh, just to keep in mind, if we let it go for them, we let it go for all sites in town, so, cause we have to apply it equally, so, uh, with temporary banners, so.
So really what we're looking, it's more of an aesthetic issue.
It's aesthetic issues, yeah.
It's not a free speech, you know, what's on it, it's just aesthetically, if you leave banner signs up anywhere all over town for however long.
Yeah.
Eventually it's gonna look trashy.
Yeah.
But you could put restrictions on the length of time that it's up, versus me having to pay a fee. Uh, my problem is the fee. We could put restrictions on, Juneteenth is July nineteenth, you can have this banner up between May the first and July the nineteenth, or June nineteenth.
So we would just be looking at maybe extending that two-month period to be, you know, maybe a little bit longer? I mean, is that, would that be the approach, if someone wanted to consider that, would just be?
Well, it's not two months for that banner, it's that First National, or for, that any business in town gets a banner for two months out of the year.
One banner.
Yeah.
Whereas before, I've seen five or six banners out there, if, I still, I think that's too restrictive. I feel like, I feel like there could be an option for as many banners, but one banner, um, but the, the fee, again, I go back to the fee, the cost. Um, I think I would like to see eliminated personally, and then the length of time. So yes, we should not be allowing them to stay up there for life, but then there's a length of time that is required that they have to be removed, and then we hold whoever responsible for removing them. I just, I think we don't want to restrict, place a restriction on that.
So Jennifer, is there, it, let's say First National Bank wanted to have six banners up for two weeks at a time, and it was equaled, whatever, less than two months.
Total.
Then would that be acceptable? You can have as many individu, you know, if they had a two-week banner for Juneteenth, and a two-week banner for Fourth of July, and a two-week banner for whatever.
And that equal to, yeah, they can do that, they can switch it out every two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
To add up to two months' time, yeah. That, that, that's, that, that's how the, you can come in and.
That's how you would apply the rule.
Yeah, and, and that's actually, I think in the previous code I read, that you actually had to come in and reapply every two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and I will say that's part of, part of it is, is we've had, we've so much growth, so much going on, code enforcement has, um, signs as, you know, kind of, the, just not the era we've focused on in the last four years, and it's got, it's drifted since I've worked here. The amount of, I, we call them feather flags, those ones that flutter at the entrances of everything, there's a bunch of them that aren't even on people's own property anymore, that we're having to send code enforcement after, so. Just, yeah, s, signs is a never-ending battle on all directions.
I have, I have that same issue in the city where I work, where the si, sign enforcement's really difficult.
Yeah.
So you, at some point, you've kind of gotta draw a line, and if we're using city staff resources to have to process all these permits, there needs to be some fee associated with it, even if it's really minor, or figure out another way to adjust our other fees to cover it. even if it's really minor, or figure out another way to adjust our other fees to cover it, but.
And that's something, so, one of the things that all, another thing that got mentioned during the signs is that with the B three code adoption, we didn't realign our fee chart to match up strictly with the B three codes. Um, so that's an exercise we're, we're going to be going through this summer so that we can, uh, get those into the code, so. And sign fees were one that was, uh, discussed to be looked at, so.
Fabulous.
So just, uh, carry, uh, pick up where she left off on, on, uh, I do think that we have to be equitable. You know, I think we wanna have that, so the only way to do that is to put in some rules. I hear what you're saying, uh, maybe there's a way to strike a balance on the fee and if, uh, nonprofits or there's tax exempt groups, maybe that's something to take into consideration, they pay a reduced fee or something like that, or, or none at all. Um, but I do can, I do have the same concern about how do we regulate some and not all? So I think that's good that we try to, cause that's gonna happen. I think it's gonna, and that just, now when it comes to signs, it's gonna be just about everything. It could come down to, uh, short-term rentals. You know, it's always gonna come to, somebody's gonna say, well, why are they, there's, it's too loud, I don't want anybody here and we have to be able to, or we just had a situation here where people wanna expand on a piece of land. So we have to follow rules. Uh, unfortunately, that's, the bigger we get, I think the more it's gonna be harder to do that. Uh, but, uh, maybe we can do something about the fees i- in that regard.
And that'll be, um, an exercise that we're going through on the building and planning side, so.
And, and I, I agree. Like, I, I think it seems like each week we keep coming across something that, you know, is kinda hard to have a hard stance on, you know, so.
It is.
It would be nice to have few, a little option on some things.
And so with the, the direction given by Council, staff will be coming back with those amendments at their next meeting, so.
Thank, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, it's a really good slide.
Five B, individual requests from Planning and Zoning Commissioners. The particular items to be listed on future agendas. Anybody have anything we wanna talk about? Gary?
Uh, I know we talked at the last meeting about, uh, sign regulations for those other major corridors like nine-six-nine. Um, do we have a plan to bring that back? If not, I'd like to request that we bring that back, the next one.
Um, so an actual plan for that or a plan to make a plan?
Well, we talked at the last meeting about that that needed to be, the, the sign policy for the ETJ needed to be looked at. I'd like to request that we bring that back.
The actual policy?
Yes.
Uh, will that, so, so we'll come up with a timeline, so I will say, um, we're in the process of, from our January twenty-eighth meeting that we had, talking about all the updates to the codes, um, we're working our way through those. Um, on top of ha- uh, reviewing, I think, three or four development agreements right now. So, uh, staff time is, is pretty, uh, thin. So, so we'll have to, like, we're, we're looking at ways to expand that capacity. Um, so we'll put that in the, the list of priorities, but I, it may not come back with an actual plan for what that looks like, uh, for a couple of months, so.
Fabulous.
Because of, uh, because what, our next priority is, um, what we talked about on January twenty-eighth with the code updates was to try to, um, kind of revise the review process, make sure it was clear who was reviewing what and to make the code read clear with the technical manual, uh, kind of being the first chapter, tells you how to use the code. So where that's, that's our next, next step, which is a lot of work, so.
Gonna review the review process?
Yes, we're reviewing the review process. It's, uh, kinda like coming up with a plan to make a plan, we.
Anybody on this side? I can't see through the, the screen. Fabulous.
Well, so speaking of capacity or bandwidth, how is that, I mean, my question's gonna be about what's the status of the Plan Direct, Planning Director, or what's going on?
Uh, so we're, so, uh, one of the things with the budget for last year, um, that Planning Director budget was used to cover the new Director of Engineering. Uh, that was one of the mid-year budget updates in January. So, there is no budgeted position, I think, for the Planning Director until October, so. But what we are looking at in the meantime is, uh, we're reaching out to several firms, uh, to, to try to expand, um, contractually our, our depth and have, and outsource some of our reviews and, um, uh, and code amendments to give us, uh, some more depth of planners without having to hire new planners, so. It's, it's, that's the challenge of planning departments is when it's really, really busy in building departments, it's, um, we're really busy and then when it's slow, you've gotta find new projects. So we're trying to kind of, uh, supplement, like we did with the building department, uh, with inspection services, supplement with a service that'll be able to contract, contract and expand as, uh, we have new developments.
Anything else? If nothing else, um, the five C, Planning Department Monthly Projects Volume Report.
So this is our monthly report on all the applications or the major applications we received over the last month. I told the building department they were slacking because I only did sixty-four new single-family residential instead of a hundred and eighteen. Um, haha, but still very busy. Um, we've, uh, got a lot of, uh, with the Colony, uh, Pecan Park finally finishing up. We're getting all, and then Bassdrop Grove Residential, it's kicking off. We're still seeing a lot of planning activity, uh, which will lead to more buildable lots. Um, but development is definitely clicking in Bassdrop, so.
That's why we're having, that's why we're having a special meeting, right?
Yes, yeah. So then that's, the other update is, yeah, we have a special meeting next Thursday. We'll be getting, hopefully, that staff report out to you tomorrow so I don't have to work on Monday. Uh, haha, uh, which they'll be, uh, it's, it's called, uh, it's got a couple of different names. Bassdrop, uh, five-five-two Bassdrop is what we've been calling it and it's five hundred and fifty-two acre development agreement. That will, uh, be coming to you next, uh, Thursday to review and make a recommendation.
Jennifer, what's trades?
Trade permits are the different, um, plumbing, electrical and mechanical individual, uh, per, uh, workers who have to go and do the actual work. So, for every single-family residential, you have three to four trade permits that have to get issued, um, for that person to go hook up the electricity or do the plumbing.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to item six. I'll entertain a motion.
Is that motion to adjourn?
We're outta here. Thank you. See you Thursday.
Yes.